Let's call the meeting to order if you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, we are going to delete Action Item B and add Action Item F, which is Daystar, Metropolitan Permit.
Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of February 2nd, 2015? Hearing no corrections, then all those who approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of February 2nd, 2015 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So the minutes from February 2nd stand approved. We move on to reports. Very briefly, I just wanted to let everyone know that the 2015 Board of Review notice that our Assessment Department will hold Board of Review, well, it's a separate board, but they have a Board of Review March 9th, 10 to noon, and then again, 1:30 to 5:30 p.m. Tuesday, March 10th, 1 to 5, and then 6 to 8 p.m. Wednesday is March 11th, 2 to 5 p.m., and then 6 to 9 p.m. It's on a first come, first served basis. We don't take appointments, but you can show up at any time if you want to appeal your assessment value on your home. Let me see. Again, I bring your attention to these forms. If your house is not identified properly with a number, we have a service who's going out and helping our fire department by getting, well, it's first response. They're helping to mark street addresses, and a portion of that, I think a dollar out of every $20 goes to our fire department. I think that's all I have. Madam Clerk, do you have a report for us this evening?
Not tonight.
Madam Treasurer, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, just a reminder, for the winter tax bills are due Monday, March 2nd. And a motion to pay the bills, please.
We have a motion. Is there a second to pay the bills?
Second.
Are there any questions on those bills?
Do we have to pay the tax?
Well, yes.
See, I'm talking about senior citizens.
Yes. Yes, you do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go back to the bills. Is there any other discussion on the motion to pay the bills? No? Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on the motion to pay the bills.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Cortes? Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menendez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Are there any trustee reports this evening?
Yes, well, I have an item that I want to bring up, if I might. I think that the last meeting, the board members were provided with a copy of the insurance carried by the township through the Michigan Township Participation Plan, I guess, property and casualty insurance. And I've, I had a chance to review it, although not thoroughly yet, but I do notice that, or I did notice, that the premium on that policy is substantial, and it has increased over the last couple of years substantially. In fact, between 2013 and this year, it increased from 237,000 to 323,000 insurance for the year. And a couple of comments I have to make about this. First of all, I believe last year I indicated that we ought to take a look at competitively bidding this insurance, if we can, to see if we're getting a fair deal. And secondly, I'm wondering if there's things we could do, or not do, to reduce this premium And it might be a good idea, the next time around, is to hire an expert to help us, look at this policy, and let us know if there's areas where we can save some expense. This is a significant premium, and the increase, which was 36% over two years, indicates to me that maybe we're doing some things that we shouldn't be doing, or should be doing some things that we, to help us here.
So just a couple of pieces of information on that. Well, the Personnel Committee, Madam Treasurer and Madam Clerk and I meet with our agent, Larry Clever with Burnham Flowers. There's all sorts of types of insurance in there, from fire trucks, police cars, to, we added a rider for terrorist attacks. So we can look at competitively bidding this. There are some, I think, that will be very difficult to do that, but we can look at that. I will say this, that since I've been here, what, six and a half years now, that has gone up and it's gone down. It's been as high as 400,000 10 years ago, and it's been as low, I mean, you quoted, a couple of years ago, it was 200 and what?
Well, two years ago, it was 237, and this year it's 323.
So it's fluctuated in the last 10, 15 years. We can take a look at that, though, and I wanted to mention, we mentioned it in our staff meeting today. I asked Mr. Clever if we could meet with one of their people from Risk Management. The reason we have, our premiums have gone up is because of the experience, you know? The more claims that go in, the higher your premiums go. So when it comes to any lawsuits, or any car accidents, or anything like that, you've got to look at, do we want to put a claim in for something, and look at the cost and the benefits from putting that claim in, and maybe we pay it out of pocket. So we're going to meet with, her name's Rita, I can't remember her last name. We're going to set up an appointment. I'm going to have the Controller, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, and both of the chiefs in the meeting to see how we can reduce our risk and our exposure, so that we can drive the experience down, so that our premiums will go down. So we are doing that. It will occur in the month of March. If you want me to set up two meetings, where you can be in that, and the trustees, I mean, we can only have, we can't have more than four people in a meeting. But if you're interested in that, or you just want a summary from that meeting, we can do that. We do that for workers' comp. We meet, I don't know if it's every year or every other year, depending on our exposure and our risk to workers' comp. We have a lot of claims. They come out and talk to us and say, you want to lower these premiums, you've got to lower, you know, your claims here. So we've done it for workers' comp. We're going to do it coming up here in March for our liability insurance, and if you're interested in being in that meeting, we can include you. But we share, we share the same concern, it's a lot of money. And, but I don't know about competitively bidding that. I don't know how many places cover things, I know Inland Marine covers all the stuff, all things through the fire department. We don't know how many other companies out there do that, but we can look at it, okay? And I can get those answers.
Good.
Madam Supervisor, over my past experience sitting on the board, it seems like the last few years, we've had multiple claims of lawsuits, either by employees, or whoever, or from the outside, but every time you have a claim, or like, potential claim, it's going to get bumped up. And I've also experienced that for myself. If you go from one insurance company to the next one because he's cheaper, you'll be cheaper for one year, and then the second year, it goes right back up to where it was. So you've got to be careful on that.
We've seen it a lot with healthcare. I'll tell you, one year, and I think it was with our workers' comp, we did so well for a while, we got a refund of 300, was it, $315,000? I think it was in 2011. So we have our good years and we have our bad years. And we don't have any control over anyone who decides to file a lawsuit against the township because they didn't like what we were doing. So, any other trustee reports? We move on to general reports. Chief Zippert?
Some of you have probably read in the, on MLive, of the recent events involving Craigslist. We've had two robberies this year involving sales that originated on Craigslist. One was on January 27th, and one was on February 9th. And in both instances, the victim was attempting to purchase an iPhone 6 that they had seen on a Craigslist ad, and they then were to meet the seller at a, at two different locations, and ended up being confronted with an individual with a handgun who demanded their money. And so we don't have a lot of information on the suspects. It was a basic description that was provided, but we're working on the case. But we're also encouraging people to use our lobby at the Police Department if they want to conduct a transaction. The lobby is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There are cameras in there. Our employees will not act as witnesses for transactions, or sign any paperwork, or anything like that, but the lobby is open, and it's not only ours, but Grand Blaine Township and the City of Fenton also have that. And I know a lot of other police departments that are open during the day offer that same service. So I just would encourage people to be cautious about trying to use Craigslist, and where they purchase the items, just do it safely.
So for anyone who doesn't know it, the Police Department, we still get people who come here looking for the Police Department. The Police Department's located at 5200 Norco Road. It's between Dai and Linden Roads, south of Lennon Road? Yeah, that's the nearest one, between Lennon and Miller Road. So you can find information about our Police Department on their website at Flint Township Police Department, or we've got a link on our website, flint township.org. Thank you very much, Chief Zippert. Chief Ringwaldski, do you have a report?
Since we last met, we had two significant structured fires. One was in a modular home out off Elm's Road. That was a complete loss. It was a result of the homeowner trying to thaw pipes with a space heater. So I want to remind everybody, when using space heaters, that first of all, they should not be left unattended, and they should be at least three feet from combustibles. This particular heater was a Portal Salamander. It uses a fuel like diesel or kerosene, and throws out a significant amount of heat, and it was left unattended. The second structured fire was recently over at our Sunridge Apartments, as a result of cooking unattended. So a reminder again for individuals who are cooking, keep an eye on your food, stay with it, never leave a stove unattended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Tucker, do you have a report for us this evening?
I have no report this evening. I have a couple of things on the agenda.
Thank you very much. So at this point, I'm glad to see some of you braved the cold, and we're glad you're here, especially because we have a very special person to honor. And if Peggy Anderson would join me up front here.
We wanted to honor her, as she has given her life to the community service.
So I'm just going to read the resolution, okay?
Whereas Peggy Anderson has served Carmen Ainsworth School District with the utmost professionalism, as an able, thoughtful, and dedicated school board member during her 21 and a half years of service. Whereas Peggy Anderson dedicated her professional life to education by first serving as a teacher for Flint Community Schools. Whereas Peggy Anderson began serving the parents and students of Carmen Ainsworth School District in July of 1993. Whereas Peggy Anderson attended approximately 473 regular Carmen Ainsworth School Board meetings, and countless committee meetings and other school improvement activities. Whereas Peggy Anderson has held every position on the Carmen Ainsworth School Board at least once, and served under five superintendents. Whereas Peggy Anderson saw many changes take place during her tenure as a Carmen Ainsworth School Board Member, from the early days of computers in the classroom, to maintaining a full academic program, even with devastating cuts in school funding. And whereas Peggy Anderson always acted on behalf of the students to do what she termed "the right thing." And whereas Peggy Anderson also contributed to the community by serving as president of the Flint Township Carmen Ainsworth Senior Citizens Governing Board for many years. And whereas Peggy Anderson is a loving wife to her husband, Bill Anderson, who's also here tonight, and a caring mother and grandmother. Whereas Peggy Anderson has been an exemplary citizen and a devoted public servant. Whereas the Charter Township of Flint wishes to recognize the hard work and contributions of Peggy Anderson during her years of dedication to the families and children of the Carmen Ainsworth School District. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Flint, on behalf of the staff and residents, do by issue this proclamation in honor of Peggy Anderson, and to recognize her time and dedication to the community of the Charter Township of Flint. Congratulations.
Did you get it? So now, we just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done, and I see you all around the community. You're here, and you're there, and you're always involved. We appreciate all that you do, and I know you're going to continue. Just because you've retired, I know you're going to continue. So the board, we need to have a motion to approve the proclamation?
We'll move to approve this proper portion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. God bless you. Thank you, Peggy. Thanks for being here. So we want to public comment. If you'd like to address the board, I ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to address the board. Okay, so we'll move on to Action Item A. It's to consider the contribution of Genesee County Planning Commission Household Hazardous Waste Collection. It's a collection they do twice a year. They do it in a couple of different locations. They hold the one in the springtime, one in the fall, and they take most of the things that our regular pickup for trash and recycling and waste, or yard waste, they don't. And they're asking for, is it $2,000? Yes. They're asking for us to donate $2,000, and a motion would be in order to do so.
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the $2,000 to the Genesee County? Road call? Money? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Cortes? Yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do we have dates yet for the 2015?
No, they'll come out shortly before it, and we'll have postcards out here that they give, and we also put it on our website, and they started having commercials, I think.
It's only May.
It's May and October, so it'll be coming up, and we've already had the residents asking, so we'll get that information out. Ted Henry usually brings those over from the county. So we'll move on to Action Item C. Mrs. Tucker?
C and D are both for Sinorama has purchased a building on Miller Road that has been empty at least eight to 10 years. It's the old Comfort Zone water bed building. We'd like to see if somebody in there and get it back on the tax roll. What he's asking for is that it be, that we establish a commercial rehabilitation district there, and then issue a certificate to him. This is much like the IFTs. It's the exact same thing, except for it's an industrials and commercial area. The tax base for the building would remain the same, 100% for the value that is there. The difference would be, he would receive a 50% decrease of the value of his additions to the building. If he does new asphalt, if that increases the value from 100,000 to 200,000, he would be taxed on an additional 50,000, so 150,000 total instead of 200,000. So that's how it works. This is just to set the public hearing, and you'll have more information from the Assessors' Department at that time, but we would like to not do this at the next, at the March 2nd meeting. It's the March 16th meeting we wanted to do it at, to give the Assessor time.
March 16th.
Yes.
So the public hearing for this will be set March 16th, 2015?
Yes.
And is that the same for Action Item D?
Yes, please.
We'll set that for the March 16th meeting also. Public hearing on that. Right?
Yes, please.
So we just said it, we don't have to vote on that, right? We do have to vote?
I think you need to vote to set the public hearing. I think you can vote for them both at the same time, if you wish.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Any comments? Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on, we don't have to do roll call, we'll do, the motion is for March 16th, 2015, public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action Item E is the 2015 construction season. You'll see the paperwork that was handed out today. The Road Advisory Committee met, and we took a look at the road plan that we put together. It was a four-year road plan, and we also looked at what was done last year. There was one, one thing on the plan that was not done, and that you'll see here, under the road millage funding, is a Mandeville subdivision. The board approved it last year, but it wasn't done. They didn't have enough time to get it done, so that's on the, on the list for this year. The other subdivision for two, or the other road for 2015 was Lask and Townview, and you see, the estimate from last year was about $80,000. So that takes up about all the money that we have budgeted for road millage funds, for road projects for 2015. Under road millage funds, we have $40,000 set aside for ditching. They were supposed to do tuxedo and camp last year, but they were, Consumers Energy was laying the line down, and they couldn't get to it. So those might be some roads, and working with the Genesee County Road Commission Supervisor, we'll look at doing some more. And as soon as I get estimates for those, I'll bring that to you. Under block grant funds, we have reserved the total amount of block grant funds that we get for roads to be used on River Forest, but I've had a difficult time getting an estimate because the damage is so extensive. It goes from engineering, and they turn it over to maintenance, and maintenance says we can't do it, go to engineering. So I talked to them again today. I'm waiting for something from the Road Commission to repair River Forest, but we're setting aside that $98,000 of block grant funds for that road. And you can see over the three-year cycle for block grant funds, we've already spent 12,000 of block grant funds on ditching. We have $3,100 left, and I'm not quite sure what roads we're going to do there, and I want to draw to your attention, if we do the Mandeville subdivision, which we approved last year, and if we approve Townview and Lask tonight, that uses up road millage funds. Our board has approved Health Source Parkway, and I'm, we did not designate where it was going to come from, whether we're going to pay for it through road millage, or if we're going to do it through general fund. And then I'll also bring to your attention, we had a plan, and that was to do Cockens Road in three portions. One portion was done last year, there's two remaining. And I've also had some concerns about Court Street from Linden to the city limits. Well, we don't have an estimate for that yet, and Graham Road was brought up. We don't have an estimate for that, but those two roads are on next year's plan, or a list of roads to do next year. But according to the plan, and this is just a plan, we can deviate from it, but Mandeville Sub was approved last year, we'll do it this year, and Townview and Lask will be done, and that uses up our road millage funds, and I'm asking this board to approve that estimate, Townview and Lask for this year, and I'm asking, we already approved $53,000 for Health Source Parkway. I'm asking to take it out of general fund rather than road millage. That's something for us to consider. And I'm asking that we continue with our plan. Instead of doing Graham Road yet, or Court Street, we still have two sections of Cockens Road to do. This is an old estimate. This estimate is from last year, 166,000. We do have matching funds that the Road Commission gives to us, and they have to be used on local or section line roads. They can't be used in subdivisions. So we can apply those funds to Cockens Road if we do that this summer, and if the estimate's approximately 166,000, you take off those matching funds, that would be $111,000 to do between Linden and Graham Road. So this is what the Road Advisory Committee worked on today. This is what they unanimously recommend, and I'm presenting this to the board for their approval. You can see, because we don't have ditching for block grant funds here, so there's still some more things to do, estimates to get, but this is our plan for this year, and I'm recommending it for approval.
Madam Supervisor, a question before we move. On this Health Source Parkway, wasn't that supposed to be split three ways?
The cost of Health Source Parkway is $161,000. The Road Commission's paying 27%. Patsy Lou and Health Plus is, they're paying, I think it's 22%, and we're paying 35%. I don't have those papers in front of me, but we're all putting in money here, and our portion's 53,000.
I always thought I heard contribution was $30,000, and the other two were picking up the balance.
That was before someone from the Engineering Department went out there and said, the maintenance repair is not going to fix that road. That cost went from 90,000 up to 161,000, because there's a section that has to be torn out, because it wasn't, it won't hold up. So the cost went, it did go up. But we are splitting that four ways, not entirely equally.
Or, no.
But if we take it out of road millage funds, we would not be able to do Townview or Lask, and those roads need it also. So I'm, no, I can't guarantee that. This Cockens Road estimate was last year's.
Right.
I can't guarantee, it's approximately, and I can bring it back if you want, but I know for sure we have $54,000 to match, which leaves our cost at 111,000. So.
With Health Source Parkway, I mean, we're still talking 166,000 out of general fund.
You're right, we are. That's absolutely right. And let me remind you that before, and you know this very well, before the road millage, everything was paid out. Everything pertaining to roads, whether it was an improvement, or signal charge, or lighting, it all came out of general fund. So, yes.
I do have a quick question then. So how much of the 111,000 dollars is budgeted in general fund for road projects?
We don't have anything per se in general fund. It can go to general services. You know what? We get funding from the state for right-of-way, and I'm not sure how much it is. I can bring it back, but we can direct Beth in the budget to pay this. It's a matter of us voting on it and doing it, but as we did the budget, I know for sure there's revenue, and it's R O W, right-of-way. How much is in there? I'm not sure. We didn't budget this out of general fund for 2015, so we would have to do that sitting here, if that's what the board wants to do.
Where is the 40,000 for the ditching coming from?
So in our road millage, if you look at how Beth breaks it down, revenue, expenses, she always sets aside road projects, ditching, signal charges, chloriding, it's budgeted for.
It's already budgeted for, okay.
So it's.
So if you don't use 40,000 for ditching, then you could pull it out of there?
If that's what this board wanted to do, that's what we could do. You're right.
40,000 is quite a bit of money for ditching.
And we've done a lot of ditching, and I'll tell you that, if you can't maintain drainage on a road, you know that, your road goes to pot. So the Road Commission recommends we continue on a schedule of ditching. Whether we do all of it, I don't know. We do, I will say this, and you know this, Belinda, the Road Commission allows so many days of ditching work for free, so we don't have to pay for it. So we can take advantage of that, and use this 40,000 dollars toward this. I'm up for that. I just think that we're never going to get ahead of the game if we don't take a more aggressive approach to fixing roads in the township. We're chasing our tails, and by the time we fix some of these, we haven't gotten to others, and the ones that we did fix need to be repaired again. We need like 10, we need a million dollars.
I guess my concern, Supervisor Miller, is taking 111,000 dollars from the general fund. That's my concern, and if there's money in the general fund to take out that was not budgeted for, that's not good. That's a lot of money.
Belinda, you know that our, our fund balance is almost three and a half million dollars. We're recommended by our accountants to have three months' worth of operating expenses. Again, if we don't get on an aggressive plan to fix our roads, they're going to fall apart, and we'll be driving on gravel, dirt roads. It's a recommendation that comes unanimously from the Road Advisory, and I recommend it myself, and it's up to this board to decide. myself, and it's up to this board to decide if they want to use taxpayer dollars that way. I think it's better than sitting in the bank, but I do think we've got to have an aggressive road plan, road repair plan. So if we want to move forward, a motion would be in order, and we can have more discussion?
I move approval of this plan.
Is there a second to this?
I'll second.
Now, you have more questions, more discussion, more comments?
I do have one question. The, the Mandeville subdivision, which was approved last year, I assume those funds then was used to do something else last year.
If you remember, we did Cockens this section, and it was more expensive than the other sections, so we were going to have to look at taking it out of general fund. Well, it, it came out of road millage, and we didn't end up doing this.
We didn't, we didn't have to take it out of general fund.
Because we didn't do this large project.
Okay.
And a couple of projects went a little bit over, but I think we ended up with three thousand dollars left in our road fund, road millage fund last year, so we pretty well spent that on road projects. So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion?
Just a comment. I don't have a problem with the road millage funds and the CDBDG funds. My concern is this amount coming out of general fund, going towards these roads here, and I, we've had residents in, with concerns with Graham Road and Court Street, and I just think consideration should be done with these streets instead of maybe some of the other projects.
So I do agree, there is a concern, and you know what? I'd get estimates on Court Street and Graham, and stick them on here too, and do them.
Yeah, but coming from general fund, I just, my, I have a concern too with that amount, being in general fund and then being able to expend this, I think there's something that needs to be looked at.
So are there any other discussion?
Madam Supervisor?
Yes?
Everybody realizes that we have a problem with roads. We have three and a half million dollars in the kitty that is drawing very little interest, and the longer we wait to do anything, the roads is going to get worse, and it's going to cost us more. So I'm for this, and I'm ready to vote.
So I also wanted to mention, it's my plan to get an estimate on Taft, and then go to the next commercial area, Austin Parkway maybe, Holiday, Exchange, Commerce, Market, I mean, we have a lot of work to do, so I just want to let you know that. We have a motion and a second to fund these projects, and out of general, we'll, we'll look at using some of this ditching here, so we don't have to take this much out of general fund. We'll talk to Beth about that, but.
They do have the ditching that they do at the.
We do, yep, it's that two forty-two, yes, we do. I'll look into that. So Madam Clerk, road call, please, on approving the recommended two thousand and fifteen road projects with road millage funds and CBD, CD, CDBG funds for two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
No.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Korts? Yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, action item, thank you. Action item F, Madam Clerk?
Action item F. On February second, I had the recommendation to delete the Daystar Metro Act permit application due to a couple of things that were missing from the application, and that was advised by attorney to do so. And today I talked to our attorney from Barnum. He says he would recommend that we go ahead and approve Daystar Metro Permit with a contingency that they will complete the rest of their insurance paperwork and go forward with it. So I was making a motion that we approve the Daystar Metro Permit with a contingency that they will bring the completion of their insurance paperwork to us.
Support.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, road call, please, on approving the Daystar Metro Act application, right?
Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Korts? Yes. Motion carries.
All righty. Well, that brings us to the end of our business. If there's no objection, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.